Order if you'll stand and join me in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll remain standing. Councilman Patrick Gantz will lead us in our invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the many blessings you give us. Thank you for the privilege that we have to live in this country, live in this town. Help us to make the best decisions we can for every community member. Lord, tonight, I just pray over the Armstrong family since we've been here. Linda passed, and just in reverence to M.D. and their family, just ask that you comfort them. Go with us as we go in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. You may be seated. Thank you. I will ask City Clerk Mona Simmons to call the roll.
Benell.
Present.
Gantz.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Here.
Marion.
Yes, ma'am.
Neil. Norris.
Here.
Trigg.
Witcher.
All right. We have a quorum, and we are ready to move forward. Thank everybody for being here tonight. Before we get started, we do need, since Thursday, you've had the agenda in your packet. I will entertain a motion to proceed with tonight's meeting utilizing the agenda that you received on Thursday.
Motion, Lowry.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Okay, okay. Is there any discussion at this point? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor proceeding using the agenda as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign? All right, let's move forward then, and you've had a chance to look over the minutes that were sent to you in your packet as well. At this point, I'll entertain a motion that we approve those minutes from our last meeting.
Motion, Benell.
Okay. Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second. Anybody want to discuss anything on the minutes from the last meeting?
I just want to thank the clerk for the detailed discussion in the minutes. I really appreciate the time it takes for you to do that. I like that being back in here.
That's very good. It helps understand, sometimes you need a little something to jog your memory, don't you? And thank Mona for doing that and doing a good job every time that she does. Okay, we had the discussion. I'll call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye. And opposed, like sign? So we are ready to move forward into our annual departmental presentations. And I really like this because as the public and as the council, we have people who get a whole lot of work done in behalf of the city. They don't get a whole lot of recognition. We don't get to watch everything they do. But I do enjoy these presentations as a part of the council meeting, so listen up. Our first one on the agenda is going to be the Parks and Recreation Department, and Eddie Furlong is there who's going to talk about that. Eddie?
Thank you, sir. Mayor, council, thank y'all for having me. I've been told I have to keep it short, so I went from an hour, probably do about 20 minutes or so. But we'll see what we can get done. Whatever I can do for you, Joe.
What did Joe say? Oh, okay.
All right, so I'd like to give everybody a recap of the directors and the staff. So once again, that's the four directors that have been here since the very beginning. I'm the second longest tenured behind Oshel Tuck, and like I've told you before, I'm not going for his record. It's safe. You know, hats off to him for doing that all those years. So here's my staff currently. We have 12 full-time employees. We are still with one position open. My guys and gals, they're a great bunch of people. They get in there and do the job, and they don't complain about it. They show up like they're supposed to, and it's just awesome to have them, have them with us. So here's our parks. We have Gorham Park, Weldon Park, Twymon Park, the Beulah Nun Mini Park, which is where the Veterans Wall is, American Legion Park and the City Pool, Beaver Creek Park, and then our Liberty Street Offices. Those are the years that they opened, and also the acreage at those facilities. And on top of that, we also help maintain the Triangle on Leslie, Cemetery on Cherry Street, Fort Williams, and we help with other properties that the city manages as well. So I have a few pictures to show of the different facilities. I'm really proud of Liberty Street. We've done a lot to that since we've been there in 2003. That's the original gym floor that you see in those pictures. We've brought it back to life, and we try to take care of that as much as we can. So, excuse me, now I'll talk about some programs that we offer. These are the main programs that we offer year in and year out. By far, our largest program is our youth soccer program. This season, we have 361 kids playing. That's 27 teams. It's the biggest we've had so far, and it just continues to grow every year. Even with baseball going on and football and some of the other things that take place throughout the year, it continues to grow. The issue that we are having now is having space to play all of our soccer games. We have to share the soccer complex with both school systems, and we're kind of running out of room out there. So on top of our programs, we do run a couple of events through the year that are free to the public. Our Halloween event, which we do down at the Grove behind Ralphie's, and then our Easter egg hunt that we had a few weeks ago. We had over 1,000 people come out to that event, and I'll show you some pictures of that. So this is our Halloween event that we had at the Grove. Mayor Royce was there, before he was the mayor, and had a nice little event or a little booth set up. And this was our Easter egg hunt this year. Somebody might recognize the Easter bunny. I know who it was. It's one of you all if you don't know. I'll let y'all take a guess if you'd like. But this event's really fun. It takes us a few hours to put all the eggs out, and literally in about one minute, each field is wiped out. It's the quickest vacuum cleaner I've ever seen. So some of the events and community partners that we have, we have a walk gym and exercise equipment that takes place up at the Liberty Street Gym. It's open to the public Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 3:30. We also opened up a cardio room this year. It has a couple treadmills and some bikes in there for anybody that wants to come up and use it, free of charge. Same thing, same hours. We offer an open gym pickleball. It's just, you know, come out and play. We have a big turnout on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings. They start showing up about 7:30, and they stay there till about noon. We do some other events such as a Touch a Truck, Love Your Parks Day, which we did a few weeks ago, where the community came out and helped maintain the parks. We do Christmas in May. If you guys haven't seen that, we did that last week. And then we also help with the Entertain Glasgow events. Some of the other events that we are bringing back this year, I just had a meeting last Friday. So we are bringing back the Movie in the Parks series. There's going to be three movies this summer. We're partnering with NEMAC, the Qantas Club of Glasgow, and the Barron County Family YMCA to put those events on again. We also help with the Toys for Tots Annual Drive, and we are actually the distribution location for them every winter. Some other things that we do are community relief, Merrywood Weldon Library Book Sale. We help with that. And then there's some other events that you guys can see on that board as well. And then this year, as everybody's probably familiar with, we partner with the Barron County Parks and Rec Department. They took over or partnered with Gap, and their baseball program has 817 kids in that league, and a good portion of those are playing out at Beaver Trail pretty much every day of the week. So those are some of the things that we do. Now I want to talk about park upgrades. Now, we've been doing some park upgrades since 2020. I've listed some of them, and I also have the new ones that have taken place this year. So the new ones that are taking place this year are, have already taken place. We have an 18-hole disc golf course at Gorham Park. We have a new restroom that is 90% done out there. We do have a rebuild on Richardson Stadium that still has to take place, but that's in the works. Weldon Park has seen some new security cameras installed, new bathroom there as well, and another 18-hole disc golf course, which is about a week away from being done and opened. On top of that, Beaver Creek Park, we installed a new playground, which I think everybody's heard or seen so far, and I've got some pictures to show of that. We have some security cameras out there. We widened the walking trail. And next month, we have a 40 by 32 by 18-foot tall shelter coming that's going to serve various needs for us. Twymon Park, same thing, a new restroom there as well. And then American Legion Park, we have a new design that's, that's in the works for a new park and City Aquatics Center, which I'll show a picture of that as well. So now I just want to showcase some of the things that I just talked about. So this is Weldon Park. That's the playground that was installed a couple of years ago. We actually made the catalog, the cover of that catalog for Miracle Recreation, and some of those children are actually kids of city, city employees. So that playground also has the Pour-in-Place Surfacing. It's the first one that we've had in this community. It gets a ton of use. I kind of feel bad that we have Beaver Trail's playground now because it's taken some of the thunder from that, but it's still a good playground to go to. Now here's some of the upgrades that are currently taking place. The top left picture is the play, I'm sorry, the restroom. And every restroom that we're building, they all look identical, so everything's going to be the same from one park to the next park. Top right is a screenshot of one of the security cameras that we have out there. It's actually clearer than what it looks in that picture when I'm looking at it on my, my computer. And then the bottom pictures are the disc golf at Weldon. And that disc golf course is going to be called Weldon in the Woods, so we're pretty excited about that. American Legion Park, really the only main thing that we did there over the last couple of years is the playground. But I did want to include the picture of the pool just because I want everybody to know that it is still there. We are going to be open in a few more weeks, so if you, if you aren't ready, get ready because we'll be there. Twymon Park, same thing, playgrounds. We redid the basketball court a couple of years ago with new goals and painted it and whatnot, and then the new restroom as well. Gorham Park, we've done quite a bit at Gorham Park as well. New playground, new shelter, new restrooms. We had a group in the community come out and paint the basketball courts for us, and that was a blessing for us because it's something we wanted to do for a while. They came in and did it for free. It didn't cost us a thing. Same thing with both disc golf courses. Didn't cost the city a dime, so it's been a great partnership. So there's some pictures of the disc golf and then the restroom there at Gorham as well. So Richardson Stadium, I just wanted to bring it up because everybody knows about it and talks about it every now and then, but that's what it looked like the morning that it burned, and then the morning after. The bottom right picture, oop, sorry, bottom right picture is currently what it looks like. They are playing there. They have been playing there since the first week in April, give or take. But we are in the process of a redesign for that. I'm hoping to get that rolling a little bit quicker than what it has, but we're waiting on our architect. And then this is the masterpiece right here for me, Beaver Creek Playground. It's huge. In that top left picture, you can see the old playground. It kind of, it's dwarfed by the new one. But the good thing is, it's been, still getting a lot of use because the other one is so busy. Now unfortunately, we do plan on tearing that down sometime after the new fiscal year, only because we plan on building a new restroom facility out there, and it's going to go right up there where that's at. And the reason it's going up there is because that's a flood plain out there. Where that playground currently is, is not, so it makes the most sense to put it up there. So here's some more pictures of the playground. If you haven't been out there to see it, I highly recommend you go out there. Even though it looks big in the pictures, until you actually get out there and see it in person, you just, it doesn't. Max, have you been out there? Yeah, they don't do it justice. They don't. Even that picture on the top right, the towers look big, but I mean, they're really, really big. And then that bottom right picture, excuse me, is the, the trail where it's been widened. It's roughly four foot wide, wider, all the way around. Couple places it was a little bit less, and couple places a little bit more. But that's going to serve a good thing for us with all of the events that we're doing. And that is all I have for the presentation. I do have one more thing to show you guys, but I'll entertain some questions first. They do not currently. Currently, it is just Weldon Park and Beaver Trail. The reason we didn't do the other parks just yet is because of all the different things that are being built. We want to make sure those get built first, and then we'll put the cameras in after.
Eddie, thank you for your presentation. That was very nice.
Thank you.
And those parks really do look good, and the pictures don't do it justice. One thing that's been going around is what teenagers can do that are driving after hours. Are these parks going to be closed at a certain time?
They close at 10 o'clock every night. It's been that way since I've been around the city and way before then.
So after 10 o'clock, they're all going to be, gates will be closed?
They do, yeah.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
We have had several ideas about that location. One of them was a pickleball court. I've had somebody reach out that wants to do a footsaw court, which is basically soccer on a, on a hard court. The master plan called for doing something there, maybe a skate park or something like that. We haven't gotten too detailed with what we want to do there. Just, we know we need to do something with it.
Eddie, can you, what's the status of the agreement between the city and the Board of Education on use of the park?
My understanding is it's the same as it was when we last met or talked about it a couple of months ago. I spoke with Chad Mullenkamp last Thursday at a meeting that I was at, and he said that there has been no movement from the school board on it.
Eddie, I'd just like to say that you and the staff's done a great job in the last couple of years, the improvements, the work with the committee, the Parks and Rec Committee, the council's done a really good job.
Thank you. It's been a long time coming, but once we started getting some funds, we've been able to do quite a bit.
Eddie, show us.
I know people, if they haven't been out there to see it, they may not know that, but we've really done a whole lot the last several years. Yeah, it's pretty awesome. Now, one more thing I did want to show you guys. So I mentioned that we are working on American Legion Park. So this is the design that we have come up with. I'll show you guys in a second. This is the design as we stand for American Legion Park. That's a new aquatic center. There's a basketball court, pickleball courts. We have tennis courts down here, but after our last Parks and Rec meeting last week, we discussed it somewhere else and doing something different. So we're looking at possibly outdoor exercise equipment area. Maybe skate park over here, or a shower thing between. Doing it that way brings about five or six different pieces of beauty here in the county.
That is beautiful. That rendition is very beautiful and it's exciting. And I, I will echo the words of others that the Recreation Department is a well-oiled machine. Eddie has good people working there, and it's amazing what they take care of, you know? About anything you can mention that needs some labor done to it, the Recreation Department is always involved. When it came time to put up these decorations for the Christmas movie, it was the rec department. When it comes time to take care of things as far as downtown, putting things up, the rec department's involved. When the wind blew all the trees down at Weldon Park, among the leading chainsaw operators were all the guys at the Recreation Department, along with help from the Street Department, and Eddie's got a really good group of people. And I'm really tickled to death with the job that you all do, Eddie, and really appreciate your leadership up there, too.
Thank you.
And I do agree that, that Liberty Street facility up there has been well-maintained and well, and well-taken care of.
It's kind of a hidden gem up there.
It really is.
It's very beautiful and peaceful up there. Even with the apartments on both sides of us, it's just, it's really nice. They actually keep an eye out for us, which is a good thing, too. Thank y'all.
All right, thank you very much. Good report, Eddie. Up next, I'm looking forward to this report because the person that does this particular part of city government wears three different kind of hats, but they sort of all intertwine. Lance Kremmons is, in addition to being our Human Resources Director, he also works with risks and with safety, which is a pretty important combination. So Lance, I want to learn more about what you do and what all you're involved in, sir.
Thank you, sir. So I've, I've given a report to this group. I apologize, I don't have fancy slides and nice pictures, but there's not really anything, anything, anything that you want to see in a picture of what I do, I guess. But I've given this report to this group in the past. I've been doing the safety and risk side for about 10 years. And, and, and it's, it's basically the same information I've given you folks in the past. I tend to be superstitious, and I don't really like talking about it before it's finished, but we're seven weeks away from the end of the year here roughly, and we're finishing out what, knock on wood, has been a really pretty good year for the city in terms of safety. And when I'm thinking safety, I'm thinking about workers' comp claims. Right now, as of today, we've had so far this year, 13 claims this year, which tracks along with one of, some of the better years. When I came, we were getting about 50 claims a year about 10 years ago, and now we're, two years ago, we were at 10, which was the lowest we ever had. This year, it's, it's 13 so far. But just to put it in a little bit of perspective, 13 claims so far this year, and I promise I'm not throwing the chief under the bus at all, but as, 13 claims, and only four of those were not police-related. The Police Department unfortunately has a really tough job. All but, we've had nine claims this year that were related to arrests or training. So circumstances really outside of our control. So we've had four employees this year who've had an injury, which, knock on wood, I'm, I'm really pleased with that. That's a really good number, considering the amount of employees. We have about 200 employees over the course of the year, and the wide variety of work that they're doing for the city. What that translates to, obviously, other than just healthy and happier employees, I hope, is lower workers' comp modification rates. We went, last year, our mod rate was 1.47. This year, it's 1.05, which is a significant drop. Hopefully that we'll see that pay some dividends financially to us in the future. I think next year it'll be even better because we're going to drop a, a, kind of a rough year. 2019 was a rough year for us. We're doing some things as far as safety. We've invited OSHA to come and look at some of our areas this year. I don't know when that'll happen. They're kind of backlogged, but they're running a program for cities right now because that's one of their focus areas, and we've invited them to come and look at some of our areas and tell us where we can do better. I don't think that'll happen before the end of the year, probably, to be honest with you. But, and then we work with KLC. I work with KLC. They were just here two weeks ago, looking at some of, at some of the areas where they see a lot of claims, and seeing what we're doing and how we measure up to their standards, and I think that's going to come back real good. I'm going to transition real quickly. That's really the safety side of what I do. You may or may not know that about, well, back in September, I transitioned also into the HR role for the city. And so I've been doing that since September now, just to tell you what we've been doing since then. Probably the biggest thing that everybody in the city knows about is we switched our payroll system to ADP. That was a rocky first payroll, but we went through that, got through that, and it seems to be smoothed out. We're, we're seeing a lot of good things, I hope, now that we've got all those things ironed out and it's running well. We also have moved to make our hiring process a little bit more streamlined and a little bit more accessible. We're taking applications online, which we've never done in the past, and that's paying some real big dividends. That's probably the biggest challenge that I see from the HR side. The city is hiring good people. We're just like everybody else, and it's really hard to find good employees. And so we're just trying to make that as, I'm trying to make that as an easy process as possible. We've got some health insurance, health insurance changes coming up. Some of you may be aware. We're going to have open enrollment in a couple of weeks for the coming year, and we are transitioning to a new carrier. And then the only other thing that I've got that you all might be interested in is, hopefully by the end of June, we'll have a new employee handbook. We haven't had a new or really revised handbook since 2014, and we're working on that right now. I just got the final, final first draft last week, and we're going to start putting together a group of people to kind of pick through it and, and give us their ideas and before we bring it to this group to, to approve. So that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions for Lance?
Lance, one question I've got. It was a great record on the workers' comp. Do we offer any incentives to employees for?
Currently, now, right now, we don't. That's kind of a weird subject. It's touchy. OSHA has, over the years, changed what they thought was acceptable. They really frown on anything at all that you do that might encourage employees to not report injuries. And so even, I've, I've even had OSHA people tell me that even like a hot dog, breakfast, dinner, or lunch was, was a disincentive. So you have to be really careful about that. You have to tie those kinds of things to activities that employees do as opposed to results. They can't be results-based. And it's, it's not something we've done in the past. I'm interested in it. I, I don't know how, how we get around some of the, the legal things that we have to avoid in terms of being a municipality, but, but not at the time, not, not currently.
Other questions for Lance? He's, covers a lot of territory.
Oh, yeah, we do offer, yeah, we do have a wellness program, and that's on my list, actually, with the health insurance changes. We're transitioning to a new wellness program. We do offer those kind of things. There are some wellness incentives where employees can get some, some discount. There are some wellness incentives where employees can get some discount on their insurance premiums as well as earn some rewards for doing health-based activities. I forget about that because that's not a safety type of thing and I'm still, don't think that, I don't think about those things right away. Alright, thank you.
I'm very proud of Lance because this business of starting ADP, changing the way you get paid affects everybody. And when this first started, he was very accommodating for people who had questions, for people who didn't understand how to turn in their hours and he was right there to answer questions, just like he's been there answering questions because this business of changing our healthcare provider, there were questions about what sort of providers were covered and people have been coming in, it's a steady stream of people, he's open, his door is open and it's very accommodating to our employees. And we have 186 employees and I know that they think that that's a very, it's very good to have Lance here and I thank you for your presentation, sir. Okay, now we have Mr. Dave Fuscola. Dave has been here fairly recently to talk about storminess, so we're going to get back to some of the broader things that the Glasgow Electric Plant Board takes care of. Dave Fuscola has been the top person at the Electric Plant Board since, what was the date you first came, Dave?
It was September of 2021.
Okay, alright, so he's got some time under his belt and he's going to share some things about our Glasgow Electric Plant Board, sir.
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having me and thank you to the City Council. As the mayor alluded to, I've been here about a year and a half, a little over a year and a half now. I still have my northern accent, which comes through all the time, but last year when I was here, I was seven months into the job and still, you know, in the process of learning, which I still am, but I feel like now I've adjusted and this time last year, we were moving into our house, you know, so we've been there for a year and that sort of thing. So we're getting, we're definitely getting settled in. As far as the presentation tonight, I've got an introduction, I've got some stats, a financial update, I'll talk a little bit about our system upgrades and then our Fiber to the Home project and then have some time for questions as long as you'd like. Just to introduce myself again, Dave Fuscola, I'm from Michigan originally, I've been here for a year and a half, I'm the superintendent. And then our board members, we have a full board now for, I think it was a couple meetings ago, was the first time in over a year that we had a full board. And that board consists of Glenn Pritchard as the chairman, Chastity Lowry as the council representative on our board, Robert Oliver and Keith Rowlett and Troy Stevens is our five-person board. It's been a really, it's been a great board to work with, lots of interaction and both during the meeting and before and after, just, you know, the board gets along well. Very interested in what we're doing and I'm very pleased with where we're at there. So I want to thank you to Henry for getting us a couple new board members. And then our attorney is Ron Hampton. So just a couple of statistics here, I have, last year I presented similar stats and I have, last year's column is on the right-hand side and you can compare it to May of 2023. So we have 7586 total electric customers and that's up from 7559 last year. Of that, 5754 residential, 1832 are commercial meters, which all, those categories are up slightly, which is, you know, good news, there's some growth going on and I think we're going to continue to definitely see that over the next couple of years. Total streetlights or security lights is 4,281, up from 4,258. And I don't have it on this sheet, but 79% of those streetlights and security lights are now LED. So we've converted another 500 this past year and we'll probably continue that pace each year until they're complete. I would say we're probably within two years of getting all of our streetlights, old streetlights converted to LED and anything new that we're installing is LED as well, which cuts the energy by about 1/10th for the same light output, so. Broadband customers, we have seen a reduction in the broadband customers from 5,800 last year down to 5,568 currently and cable and video, cable video still tends to, is going down, we've lost 500 customers in the past year of cable. That's going to be, we'll have some interesting discussions about where that business is going. It's through no real fault of the cable providers, you know, we continue to lose customers because the rates just keep going up. There's a lot of other options out there. I think a big, the big change is going to come when you can get a streaming service that looks a lot like cable TV. Those people that like cable TV, it's because of the convenience, you turn it on and it's there. Streaming is still a little bit more complicated, but it gets, it gets better all the time. But that's where that business is going, is it's going to streaming. It's really a matter of when, not if, and that'll get, come into play a little bit later in my presentation as well, but that cable business is going to continue to see a downward trend. I think it's going to level out at some point, where some people don't want to give it up, but it's definitely a downward trend, so. As far as the financial update, on the next page, what you see is, I have three columns here. One, the first column is the nine months ended March 31st of 2023, our most recent quarter. And then next to that is the full year that was ended June 30, 2022. So like Lance said, we're seven weeks away from the end of our fiscal year and then we'll have the full year results. So we're, to report the full year audited, we're, you know, nine months away from that or more than that, but that's just the way that, that works out with the timing of this presentation. But we're doing, we're doing well, we're doing what we, basically what we've expected. Revenues are, on the electric side are up from last year, they're going to be up, but that's largely because of the fuel cost adjustment. You know, the fuel cost adjustment has been, has been high and that's starting to come down, so that's included in the revenue, it's also included in the cost of it sold. So that, it's a little bit misleading and there could be, I think, a better way to present this and work on in the future is really looking at what our comparable revenues are for just the base load. But anyway, we're on track for a similar year to last year. If you see, the last column is the full year that we project for June 30th of this year, very similar to last year, so. The net income of roughly 1.7 million. So moving on to the electric system upgrades, the format of what is here is 2020, what we've done in the past year basically is the first column and then last year was what we, what I showed you last year, so. And these, one more thing I'll add, I guess, is that these numbers are through the year end of 2022. So 71 pole replacements, 38 new poles installed, we've installed 32 new single-phase transformers, nine new three-phase transformers, we've upgraded some three-phase transformers, which means the load is getting bigger for that customer and we've downsized three. Last year, you can see, we downsized a total of 10 transformers and that's, we've been in this process of trying to get our transformers to match the load more closely. One of the realities of our business is that the engineers and contractors, when they are calculating the size of the load they think they're going to have, it's usually almost four times what it actually ends up being, so. Just a little interesting fact that we haven't seen in Glasgow so much, but in talking to others around the valley, that trend is changing. Because of electrification of a lot of things, you're seeing them forecasting a load and then the actual load ends up being more. So that's, that's something new really in the history of our business, so we'll see where that, how that plays out. We've also installed four new switches, these are the, they're called gang-operated airbags, which is, and we put them on our three, main three-phase distribution feeders, is to sectionalize the circuits so that if there's an outage somewhere, we can hopefully move things around, get most of the customers back on while we're fixing the problem. So that's, one other thing I'll add on the electric system upgrades is we're in the process of replacing a lot of the wooden 69 KV poles with new steel poles and that's just part of the ongoing, we bonded for four and a half million dollars in December of 2021 and this transmission pole project, replacement project is part of that, so. So the big one I wanted to really talk with you about as far as what the future is for the plant board when it comes to the cable business is the Fiber to the Home project that we're doing. We launched the project as far as the board approved it late last summer and we've actually have boots on the ground right now installing fiber, the new Fiber to the Home system. And so the first phase will be in the southwest part of Glasgow, it's down where our building is and then to the west and south. And we're going to pass roughly 1,100 homes with this first phase. A lot of, some of the initial expense with this phase, of course, is we have to have all of the head-end equipment so that we can serve the entire project, that's already been invested in and we're rolling. So we started actually physically building it about two weeks ago and we're limiting the Fiber to the Home build initially anyway to our electric footprint. You know, this is a, this is a city of Glasgow project, we're staying within the electric footprint. Once the whole electric footprint is built, then we'll decide are we going to expand beyond those borders. And then our goal is connect the first customers to this network, the new Fiber to the Home network in late June. So some people think I'm being optimistic back at the office when I say that, but I'm pretty certain we're going to be connecting customers by late June, so. So that's really all I have as far as my report and would like to take any questions.
Dave, the last time you spoke to us, we talked about, once you bring fiber in, of course, the online streaming is going to increase.
Yep.
I mean, the quality of the streaming will increase with the fiber and that's obviously going to affect cable that much more.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, so, yes, everything, the video is going to streaming and by having this fiber project, it's going to drive more customers to adopt streaming. You know, right now you can get YouTube TV, Hulu TV, streaming service that has most of everything that people watch today on cable. And, and they can, they can offer the retail for less than what we're paying wholesale. I'm not sure how that's, how that works, but that's what's happening. And so, you know, we're, I don't know if I've said it in this forum before, but we've talked about it with our board and we talked about it internally, you know, that the pricing for our cable right now essentially is only covering the programming cost, it's not covering any overhead and, you know, whether you're a business owner or not, you know that that's no way to run a business, you know, and, but that's what we're doing. So we charge, say roughly $80 for our cable service, our cost is $80, give or take a few dollars one way or the other.
So with the new fiber on the west side, would that include South Green, the new school?
Not yet. Not, the first phase does not include South Green.
Well, I was going to ask, what would they have, would they continue to have the coaxial?
Yeah, yep. And the second phase is going more to the northeast, South Green areas in the third phase and, yeah.
Also, I mean, it's tornado season, it's the summer, we're going to have storms, poles are going to be down. Here recently, we had an issue with getting transformers. Has that eased up or are we still dependent on overseas market for the?
I would say it has not eased up. I wouldn't say it's gotten any worse though either, you know, it's leveling off, I'd be hesitant to say it's eased up. We're seeing the pricing stabilize and maybe coming back down a little bit, which would indicate the supply is getting better. So we're well, we're well-stocked, but, you know, we're not necessarily stocked for a scenario where, you know, half the transformers in our system get wiped out, but we're, this last, the windstorm that we had recently, you know, we didn't have any issue with our transformer stock, you know.
How is staffing going? I know at one time there were a lot of people that were retiring, is that correct?
Yeah, we're, so we're, staffing is going very well, we're fortunate. We do have seven people retiring this year and we're in good shape as far as backfilling those roles. You know, I think, you know, like Lance was doing, knock on wood, we're in good shape with staffing and I anticipate that continuing to be the case, but, you know, you just never know.
I got one last question.
Yeah.
I meant to ask this earlier. Is there going to be some incentives either through TBA, I know the states are trying to, for electric charging stations for their public use, is that?
So the charging stations that we're going to be installing down by the cultural center, that parking lot, that is 80% TBA-funded. And we're, we've let out the bid on that to get it built and so the project will be starting here within the next couple of weeks. So that, that is one incentive. As far as others, I think TBA has kind of slowed down on giving incentives for electrification, you know, because it's going to happen, so there's not a need really to overly incentivize it, but that, that's one where, you know, the downtown area will benefit from these charging stations, just they're going to be convenient, the rate downtown, and that's directly a TBA incentive that made that happen.
So eventually you may have several of these?
There'd be two to start with, yeah, and there's room there for more and that would be up to, you know, working with the city to see if we wanted to put more there or someplace else, yeah. So it's a really nice spot for them because it's quiet, you know, it's easy to get to, it's relatively flat, so.
Dave, how's our relationship with TBA going?
It's going, it's going well. I think that they've done a lot of work to get back out in front with the public. The mayor and I were at an event at a school recently, you know, we're giving some money to the STEM program type thing. They're, they're working on, what they really need to work on is the whole power supply, you know, there's this transition work from coal and to the future, whatever it is, whether it's nuclear or, you know, some wind and solar. I think right now they're, they're trying to find the messaging there and that's, that's probably their biggest challenge, not only finding the messaging, but also getting the mix right so that we don't have events that like happened in December, so.
Dave, I'd like to add for those here and watching online that may not know, I feel like the broadband customers will increase while the cable will decrease when the fiber's done, you know, because now if you're getting 100 or 300, you're kind of sharing that with people around you, correct me if I'm wrong, and then when you get the fiber, it's coming right to them, is that correct?
Yeah, it, the speeds, it'll be more stable, it's going to be symmetrical, so the same speed that you're downloading, we can also upload, that's which is big for gamers or for people working from home. But yeah, the stability and the speeds will be consistent because there's a lot less of the shared network going on, yeah. So we're really optimistic. I mean, the entire team at the EPB is excited about this Fiber to the Home project, you know, for us to be relevant in broadband going forward, we absolutely needed to do this, you know, there's just no question about it, so there's a lot of excitement about getting, getting this turned up, so.
Thanks for the presentation.
Yep.
Other questions for Dave? It is an excellent presentation and you're on the cutting edge of changing technology and I really feel good about, because these are, you've got to think about the future of broadband, but you also got to build for the next big disaster from an electricity standpoint, so you all have got a lot of things to keep into the pipeline down there and I applaud you for, for being progressive and having a good stock of things like transformers and all the things that you need. and all the things that you need to provide timely, timely service. Thank you for your leadership there, sir.
Thank you to the council, and I would encourage any of you, if you have questions, to please, you know, just reach out, give me a call, and I'd be happy to sit down or, you know, whether we talk on the phone or, you know, meet in person. I'd be happy to take that time with anybody, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dave, very much. Good presentation. All right, let's keep moving. We've got some discussion, but before we do, we want to move to new business and start off with a resolution that Rich will tell us about that's on our agenda.
This is a resolution to make application for a community development block grant to support the Barron County Family YMCA. That whereas there are potential community development block grant funds available, they would ultimately benefit the Glasgow and Barron County Family YMCA and the citizens that use and enjoy that facility by providing a funding source for the expansion of the YMCA's facilities. Whereas the YMCA is not eligible to directly make an application for the funds, but the City of Glasgow, working in conjunction with the Barron River Area Development District, is eligible to make the application, and if the CBDG funds are awarded to the city, the city is allowed to pass those funds along to the YMCA for the expansion project by administering the grant, paying project bills, and requesting the reimbursements. Now therefore, in light of the foregoing recitals, bid hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow as follows. One, Brad is authorized and directed to prepare an application on behalf of the city for the CDBG funds not exceeding seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and if those funds are awarded to the city, Brad is further authorized to assist the city in administering the grant and passing those funds along to the YMCA for its project activities, including but not limited to the construction of a kitchen and senior facilities addition. The city's mayor, Henry Royce, is authorized and directed to sign the grant application, statement of assurances, and all other documents necessary for the execution of the grant application and the development of the project.
I would like to say that you've read the resolution, but we're fortunate to have members from the YMCA and from Brad here, so I'm going to call on the director of the YMCA, Ms. Tara Bailey, to go to the podium. We also have Matt Pettigo. Matt is here with Brad, and we have Angela Briggs, who is here with the YMCA as well. So I'll give you the podium, and you can call on Matt and Angela at whatever time. Tara, thanks for being here.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. As he said, I'm Tara Bailey, the CEO of the Barron County Family YMCA. The YMCA is a community service organization. You can see through our impact report how we impact people of all ages, all abilities, and all income levels. So we're asking for your support to help us further our mission in serving our senior population. Right now, we are offering senior meals through the help of Brad, five days a week at the YMCA. We need dedicated space to be able to continue to serve our senior population, and a kitchenette or a kitchen to be able to help prepare those meals and continue that pilot program. The pilot program is running through June. We would love to be able to continue that. As you've seen in our impact report, we have reached many areas of the community. One thing that we're very proud of, that we were able to accomplish through the support of the Liberty District, is our You Matters Success Academy at the Bunce Center. Many of you have volunteered for that. We greatly appreciate it. This time, I'll ask Matt Pettigo to come up and talk a little bit more about the grant process and the city's role in that process. Matt?
I believe your title is Community Development Representative, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Thank you all for having me. This looks like a very good opportunity. The YMCA, as you well know, is extremely well-used, it has a tremendous impact in the community, and there's no question that the state will be able to look at that and say, yes, this is a well-established, well-used facility. I can apply for up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The state has a discretion, if they so choose, this is the Department of Local Government, I mean, when I say the state, they have a discretion, if they so choose, to add another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a possible total of one million. Brad's administrative fees would be five percent, and that comes out of the grant only if the grant is approved. So there is no financial risk to the city on this at all. The city would, of course, have some other resolutions to pass, which I would come back before you to do. There would be some, depending on what's already on the books, I'll have to look at what the city has regarding fair housing and, and things like that, that the grant would require. But overall, I think it's going to be a strong proposal. They already have their place, they already have a well-established program, they just need better facilities for it. The city is more than qualified for the CDBG grant. CDBG is based on three, three different missions. It can be, its primary one is to serve people of low or moderate income, or LMI. Other missions include urban blight, which the county just used our program to eliminate the old detention center, which we just closed out that program last year, and also emergencies. Lord forbid you had a severe fire or tornado or something that hit a water treatment plant or something, you'd be able to apply for CDBG funds for that. Now, in order to qualify, you have to have at least a fifty-one percent LMI rate. Glasgow's is at fifty-five point three percent. It's more than qualified. You can't, the city, you should know, though, this would be the only CDBG project that they would be allowed to have during this funding cycle, because you can only have one application in at a time unless it's a special grant, like, say, Recovery Kentucky for a substance abuse center or something like that, or an emergency. But just for general projects, this, this would be it for this cycle. So, like I said, I think it's a very strong application. They've got a very strong program there, it's very impressive. If you've been there recently, you know the expansion they're already undergoing right now. That tells you a lot about how invested this community is in the YMCA of Barron County. And I'd love to, I'd love to answer any questions you all have about the grant or, or what we do or how it works. The deadline is September first for the grant proposal, and then after that, we would begin, assuming that they, the state approves it, we would begin what's called the evidentiary process. There would be a lot of resolutions to pass on that. There would be a memorandum of agreement between the YMCA and the county, or the city, excuse me, regarding cost overruns, things like that. I've got a, I've got a similar project in Metcalf County right now for the Bowling Park Food Pantry, which they, the, if there is a cost overrun, Bowling Park foots, the city pays the cost overrun, the Bowling Park pays them back within thirty days. So it would be something along those lines.
All right. In the conversations I've had with Tara and with Angela, they feel strongly about the need and the utilization of this, and so it appears to be a very positive thing to take on. Anybody want to ask questions of any of our presenters here?
Is this grant a one-year deal where you can apply for that on an annual basis for other things?
It would be a one-year grant that would basically fund the construction of the actual building itself or facilities.
Right, right.
So as far as operational costs, that would be up to the YMCA or other grant sources. Also, the, one of the things I meant to tell you was that the, the senior program is for all people regardless of YMCA membership, which is, which makes it an automatic qualifier as well for, for CDBG. Yes, sir, you had a question?
Yes. We all realize there's a funding cycle for the federal government, for money for these type programs and stuff, and you mentioned that this would probably be the amount we could get for, what, fiscal year? Which fiscal year are we talking about? Twenty-four? Would it be come out of fiscal year?
Twenty-three, twenty-four, yeah.
Twenty-three, twenty-four. So just for our, our sake, say if we had another natural disaster like we had just here recently, and then the governor comes out, they approve funding to assist communities like us if we have utilized our CB?
Yes, and emergency CDBG grants are, that, the one, the one grant rule is waived.
Yes.
For emergencies or specialty grants like, like, I'm also, I'm also in charge of the grant for the Warren County's Men's Addiction Recovery Campus, and that's, that's under Recovery Kentucky CDBG, which is a different division, and it does not count against the counties that are, or cities that are engaged in that.
Yes. You made another comment. You said that we're currently at about fifty-five percent for the, I'm just saying.
Low to moderate income index.
Yes, which, for those out there who are listening, so we don't want to be, we don't want to repeat of the thing where they say, well, y'all the poorest county. We both realize, you and Brad, you realize we're not the poorest county.
That's correct.
Poor city. We're just the only one that they've talked about. So when you say the fifty-five percent, we wouldn't like for the general public to be all of a sudden thinking, well, we're poor, or poorer than everybody else.
No, not, not by long shot, believe me. We do a lot of grants for cities and counties around the region.
Question I would have is, with this new facility, of course, the YMCA is engaged in this activity now, a portion of this, but with the new facility, what would be the impact to the community? How many additional more people would be impacted from this type of service?
That would be a question for Tara. I don't have the numbers yet.
With this service currently, the number that we can serve is unlimited, so the project that we're in with Brad now is, the only qualification, you have to be sixty and older. So with this addition of a facility, we would be able to house in that facility a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty, depending on the exact size, but that would be a place that seniors would be able to come for all kinds of activities, not just the feeding program. They'll be able to come and interact and provide some education, things like that.
I just want to piggyback on, both of the programs you've recently initiated have had, I think, positive impact on the community.
Yes.
And your expansion of the food service to the Bunce District has reached out to an extended group of people, and then the program you run at the Bunce Center.
Yes.
For those youth, I think, are reaching out. As, as you're both aware of. All right, so, thanks.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity, and we definitely need more programs for all ages in our community. So like I said, we are a community service organization. We are here to serve.
We have, I'm sorry, go ahead, Freddie.
I'm just going to say, Tara's been very visible in the community, very active, and I think that's spilling over to the programs out there, so good work for you and your staff.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I would agree with that as well. We have the people that know here, is there any further questions you would like to ask of Tara or of Matt or of Angela? We've had the reading of the resolution. At this point, I will entertain a motion that we approve this resolution.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Okay. Councilman Trigg, is there a second?
Second, Marion.
Councilman Marion has a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, lycet? And the resolution carries? Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I'm looking forward to getting started.
Thank you very much, Matt. Glad to have you here. We appreciate all the good things that Brad does for our area, and we, we certainly want to be sure and take advantage of these opportunities. We have a little real estate business to take care of next, another resolution that we need to go over, and I'll have Attorney Alexander talk about this resolution that's on the table now.
A resolution authorizing and approving the transfer of city real property, tracks one and two, containing a total of three point eight-six acres, more or less, off Bales Road to Jeff Jobe. That whereas the City of Glasgow owns certain property located off Bales Road, being tracks one and two, containing a total of three point eight-six acres, more or less, which is a portion of the property the city acquired by deed of William J. Rogers back in two thousand and eleven. Whereas the city council previously adopted a resolution declaring the aforementioned property a surplus and directing the same be advertised for sale to the highest and best bidder. Whereas the city advertised for bids and Jeff Jobe submitted the highest and best bid for the aforementioned property, and his total bid was sixty thousand two hundred dollars, thirty thousand one hundred dollars for each of the two tracks. Whereas the transaction is ready to be completed by an exchange of a deed for the purchase price. And whereas, because there is a pond situated on both sides of the originally surveyed boundary line between the city's remaining property and the property Jeff Jobe is purchasing, the boundary line has been moved slightly to avoid the boundary line running through the middle of the pond, and if, and this is a modification from the initial plat and legal descriptions that were used during the bid process. Now therefore, in light of the foregoing recitals, bid resolved by the city as follows. The plat attached as Exhibit A is approved in all respects. Two, as Jeff Jobe is the successful bidder with respect to the real property described herein, the City of Glasgow, in exchange for the purchase price of sixty thousand two hundred dollars, shall deliver to Jeff Jobe a deed of general warranty conveying tracks one and two, containing three point eight-six acres, more or less, off Bales Road. Three, Mayor Henry Royce is authorized and directed to execute all documents necessary to complete this transaction for the city, including the signing of a deed and closing statement. Four, City Attorney Rich Alexander is authorized and directed to prepare all real estate closing documents for the City of Glasgow and to conduct the closing.
All right, so you have heard the reading of the resolution. I will entertain a motion that we approve it.
Motion, Vanell.
Okay. Tara Vanell with the motion to approve it, is there a second?
Sir.
Second by Councilman Witcher. Any discussion about this real estate transaction?
Mayor, did they move the pond inside lot two or one, or did they move it? Which way did they move the property line?
They moved it, the pond is now completely in the property we're selling. We would have had a half a pond, but, but we thought we'll go ahead and put the whole pond in the sale. Is that, did I say that right, Rich?
Correct. The boundary line moves northwest, so the pond is included in track two.
Rich and I and Ms. Russell and Mr. Nick Miller from the landfill went out, we looked at every square inch of that, and to make sure where the property line was going to be and all of that, and that's, it wasn't until we had seen all that that we felt comfortable doing this, so that's the reason why the resolution has been read, and I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, all in favor of?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, did you get a second?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, interrupt, just wanted to make sure.
Okay, sorry, sorry. So all those in favor of passing this resolution indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Resolution carries. All right, and as I'm looking at all of the things, the tasks that we needed to complete, we have been through all the things that we needed to do. I will entertain a motion that we adjourn this meeting of the Glasgow. Okay, and a second? Okay, all right, and all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed?